Your officials are very, very, very disrespectful. Now we are here to speak about the policies of government. I don't know if we are going to fully participate in this session because of your treatment. Now, let's talk about basic education. I remember if we read in the books that around 1976, a civil protest against the medium of instruction. It says, "Mumahikiengkua no, the district of Ngakamudiramulema." But what happens is different. You should come up with ideas and think about what you want to do. And I'm happy to see even when I'm not there. So that they can also raise their views as well. Let me welcome you to Mahikieng Local Municipality. But we will not welcome bad attitude which has been shown to our people by the National Assembly. We should be spearheading the better treatment of our people. Let's not ever do that again.
No, thank you very much, Councillor Tsepiriso. I think on their behalf, let me apologize to you, one, as the first citizen of Mahikieng Local Municipality. And let me apologize to your people too because we don't know all of us what happened outside. We were inside and whatever treatment that was there, it's something that I think at our level, we will raise it with our parliamentary protection services. And we will obviously have to look into it. So I think you are accepting our apologies. We are apologizing sincerely for what has happened. I mean, a mayor is the number one person of a municipality. So the manner in which you treat a mayor, it's the manner that you will be treating his people. So as the Portfolio Committee on Basic Education, but as a parliament as well, we are apologizing. Hopefully, we will be able to move smoothly. Hopefully, you will have some part of accepting our apology. As we move now, I'm going to ask the members of the National Assembly to introduce themselves. I'm going to start on my extreme right and ask everybody to just introduce themselves.
Dumeelang, orunzele kwa tiliye na. Le vitso laka kenna tebo choli tiiye. Kabu du loke twa kiliko khaute. Ki membera ya parlamente, seva mo portfolio committee ya basic education. Ki deploylo ko parlamente, ki mo kha kamo choloa ANC. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Dumela, regitzechunoholi dumedise. The Portfolio Committee on Education. Now, one thing again is one zanegis tres. When you come to Mahikieng, you should know the people who are here. Even mobilization of people, there has to be opening and welcome. Perhaps I'm just going to go deeper. The taxis which are operating here to call the locals are administered somewhere out of the province. Now, we have to have also the local benefication when it comes to SMMEs. Second, I have to come and welcome people to Mahikieng, but I was ill-treated outside. And I'm seeing this thing on this platform. This is not what you're doing when you come from Cape Town in Parliament. I'm even shaking because of anger. You should never do that thing again. You know, I think I'm the only one standing in front of you with this badge. I was taken out of the queue and searched as if I'm a criminal. I'm the executive mayor of this town, but the treatment that you give to him is very embarrassing with your officials outside. You should never, ever again do that thing. Now, regitzechunue ba cholo kilidumedise. Hakibato kuatisu, hakibato reseizukoba zwan tii. But ore trita kama koba tritan kate. Arama kuhudu kua no, we are very peaceful people. Araba toli trita kazi lelora ndir, trita kaya nikuano. Hakimutoke kwa tama, today I'm just very angry. We've got witnesses. And I think perhaps we should write also to the Speaker of National Assembly. Your officials are very, very, very disrespectful. Now, we are here to speak about the policies of government. I don't know if we are going to fully participate in this session because of your treatment. Now, kikupare tara participate mbaholo, le skala tii waki enka insiiling. Kubwahore ikensera, batalandi peto kudi kuluonza rona, basic education. I remember if we read in the books that around 1976, a civil protest against the medium of instruction. It says, "Mumahikiengkua no, the district of Ngakamudiramulema." But what happens is different. You should come up with ideas and think about what you want to do. And I'm happy to see even when I'm not there. So that they can also raise their views as well. Or against seba batalandore, dikolo tisa miswe kasoani. Let me welcome you to Mahikieng Local Municipality. But we will not welcome bad attitude which has been shown to our people by the National Assembly. We should be spearheading the better treatment of our people. Le skala tla kabato batalawo rabiuse kua no. You should never, ever do that thing again. Le amare zugakoso mumahikieng kala bo.
No, thank you very much, Councillor Tsepiriso. I think on their behalf, let me apologize to you, one, as the first citizen of Mahikieng Local Municipality. And let me apologize to your people too because we don't know all of us what happened outside. We were inside and whatever treatment that was there, it's something that I think at our level, we will raise it with our parliamentary protection services. And we will obviously have to look into it. So I think you are accepting our apologies. We are apologizing sincerely for what has happened. I mean, a mayor is the number one person of a municipality. So the manner in which you treat a mayor, it's the manner that you will be treating his people. So as the Portfolio Committee on Basic Education, but as a parliament as well, we are apologizing. Hopefully, we will be able to move smoothly. Hopefully, you will have some part of accepting our apology. As we move now, I'm going to ask the members of the National Assembly to introduce themselves. I'm going to start on my extreme right and ask everybody to just introduce themselves.
Dumela, orunzele kwa tiliye na. Le vitso laka kenna tebo choli tiiye. Kabu du loke twa kiliko khaute. Ki membera ya parlamente, seva mo portfolio committee ya basic education. Ki deploylo ko parlamente, ki mo kha kamo choloa ANC. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Gueyamidach, Dumelan, Molweni. My name is Bakoli Lenotada. I'm a member of parliament serving in the National Assembly, elected by the Democratic Alliance, specifically to the Portfolio Committee on Basic Education. Thank you so much.
Gueyamidach, good afternoon. My name is Mari Sukers. Ekis alit vaniri komitee ya, ekis alit van gestiir diye, the African Christian Democratic Party, the ACDP. We are here to listen to you. Thank you, Mahikieng. We are looking forward to hear your views.
Dumelan, li nalaka kenna sheli mo khotu. Ke twa kiliko obu jana la, ko sabrigeni ya muzi scotani. Kinnale lukula parlamente, ki seva mo committee ya basic education. Kala bo.
Once more greetings. My name is Rony. My father's name is Murwatsaytla. Deployed by the African National Congress in the sixth parliament, Kukab. And further deployed by the same parliament into this all-important Portfolio Committee on Basic Education. I thank you.
Dumelan ba akibabo koni wuphirima. Dumelan ba akiba Mahikieng. Nakali vitso kenna nombuiselo adions, kinguana mo kha imo. Sin tlen tla ke tla retsi, momahikieng kodi thaku. Ki weke kholela kotelekstop. Ya nunkirumilo eki mo khatlo mo cholo busan, ko parlamente nyabo sechaaba. Mo koyona Portfolio Committee ena ya basic education. Krapke ke tse mahitato kore, ri twa re, li ri twa rele, ka iti kore, number one walona, number one citizen. Kha tritiwasint. Fela rea Tsepiriso, si kamo korebe rekan kate. Le ro na re swabile mo rele nte. Fela rea lebo kha korebe litile, lite koi tseela, moli tseelant, le tswa loko le tswa elant, kala bo.
Good afternoon. My name is Suella Elvis, a member of parliament and this Portfolio Committee deployed by the African National Congress. Thank you.
Dumela ba kaitso. Good afternoon, everyone. Huiyamidach. Lina lame kiba fuze ya bo, ki ne luku la paramente, National Assembly. I'm a member of the Portfolio Committee on Basic Education. I'm deployed by the African National Congress. I think that's all.
Thank you very much, siabonga, to the members. Let's now come to why we are here. We are the Portfolio Committee on Basic Education. You've heard all of them introducing themselves like that. I'm the chairperson myself of the committee. The Department of Basic Education is ones to amend the Sasa Act of nineteen ninety-six and the educators employment act of ninety-eight. Now, for them to do that process, they need parliamentarians to carry it through to parliament so that it can be voted for. Now, the Bella Bill, which I take it that all of you, you are here to make contributions to it, you probably understand. What is it? It is the Basic Education Laws Amendment. And it seeks to strengthen the governance in the schools. For instance, you know that we've got grade Rs that are not, that is not compulsory at this stage, so they want to make grade R compulsory. The Bella Bill seeks to provide the financial accountability by giving the ministers or the HODs more powers. And then the Bella Bill is also putting systems of improvement in terms of the school admissions, how the admissions of schools are. There are a lot of clauses that the department seeks to change, and I'm not going to speak on those clauses because I take it that you are here to say you support or you don't support the recommendations that are coming from the Department of Basic Education. Now, ours is to listen to you. And as we are going to listen to you now, we want to say first that we allow everybody to speak. But as you speak, you can only speak for three minutes. If you are done in three minutes, we are stopping you. If you feel that you don't want to speak, but you've got a view. The table there on our right has got forms. The forms that are there, it's for people who don't want to speak but who want to make their inputs. So you can write your submission there, but please, as you write your submission, put your name, and if you can, put your ID number too, so that we are able to identify. And when you return that form yourself, you must return your form there because no bulk forms, no individual will take bulk form to the table. So you write your submission, you take it to the table, and if you have done that, you are not allowed to come and speak. So you choose whether you want to speak or whether you want to write. You must do one. So I'm going to identify hands as they rise from this side first. Ten hands. And after the ten hands have spoken, I'm going to allow this side to give them an opportunity to talk. So don't just stay where you are because we're gonna come to you. So can I identify hands? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. The three of you in front, I'm coming, I'm gonna come, all of you are going to speak, but I promise. You tell us who you are, you tell us whether you support or you don't support the bill, and then you make your input. The three of you that have identified, you can join the line, also they at the back.
Dumela. Ki lapisi sekilese, lele melaa ba tva ba shewu, lasa kwa. Ki zamaila ollo va, le paramente ye, from lempopo, nseki basic dumedes akasa kwa sa dictionary. Aketsa kore ki palamanka ingaoreng, ba tva ba tese, ki ba tva ba bore na ba ba bantzu. So, language eba kai understanda ngaholo, ki anekibuwa, monara mafiki. Jolo, monara mafiki, ubiuwa Sizwana. Jolo, nakimu peedi, Sizwana se pedi se sutu, ki language za rona kau fela. Ya, jolo, ba tva ba bore na lea 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 leba la kwa le zan tinge, ba tva ba tu. Lele ba la orezo aparte iti yensun sunsun sunsunzu. Ye yongoring, ine fostela, language policy, uri iba Africans. That's where ba tu, bana mabo roona soe tuka nineteen seventy-six, baile ba tu, use, ya South Africa. It's one of the lunas only tesa kwa no. Ba tu, ba tvo ito ya ba iloa, uri okasone uri language, ya di subject kau fela mudi kuluon, iba Africans. Jolo, ba tva na ba ba shewu, lo na jolo, section eba wanleyo na ki section six. And also ba wanley, le 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 section clause fifty-seven, section fifty-one. Mo, eba wanleyo na language policy. Abanyaki H O D. Abanyaki H O D, kaur mula uri, H O D mo districting. Utsana acheke, around rona, language e dominate daki in. Jolo, ri amakala, muma mafiki mo, uhsana le ni kolo, ja ba tva ba shewu fela. And a language ya muma mafiki, kese tswana, why? Because ba tva ba show, basanya ka power. And alo kono bo na le na ba tva ba antu ba bore na ore, ba tva ba na balisa kai. Ba tva na ba nyaka uri changeisa, language policy, uri, anything ba nyaka uri ra mathematics, kasa Africans. Ba nyaka uri ra di language, ja bo na, kafrikanz. Baru seza mrau kwa, kana konya partiti, monava fostela uri, mo tjo munzu, ali re biology, kafrikanz. Le na ali ema mona kialu twa, baba ngoba tenka monteka mona, ba tla kadi t-shirt eba ya pesa tona, ibile ba le ruta ba le capaceter. Kuri le no, I don't support the bill, ala understand urba balisa kai. Na, ki supporta pili ye, ya rona ye ya Bella Bill. Thank you.
Translation.
Greetings. May I please speak in my own language as we are in mafiki, and the language that is mostly used is Sizwana. I will be using my own language since we seem to have forgotten our own languages. As we know, back in the days, people were forced to use, to use and learn in the Africans' language. So I would like to mention that I support this bill as it encourages us to use our languages. White people today, they refuse to have HODs because they know that they will not be able to use their own languages. I would like to also mention, I would also like to highlight that I am surprised that in mafiki, there are still white-only schools, while the majority of the language is Sizwana. Why are subjects still taught in Africans and English? I would like to highlight that I support this bill because I understand what it promotes. Thank you.
Kala lebo. Le vitola kake ja bu Apani. I am from Congress of South African School Governing Bodies. And before kato la pele, kerata orohoba tu vote, here in the Congress of South African School Governing Bodies, we support the bill. Kamabaka a. Kabakala amendment ya section five, ya six, le section thirty-seven. He'll replace you with section fifty-one, he'll replace you with section thirty-seven. Akibon tsengore, the section A, ya section five, imababilita ba ya admission policy. Most Sasa currently, admission policy ibua fela hore, SGB. Ki ona itetamine ngore na, kebo mama admituwa. Then, ibu la la hore ki SGB fela yeluri, inale ma tayo admita, ibile taka policy a admita. Ntwe, ile, ya ratwa kiba tva musola wa pele, kata ba ya uri. Ba tva ilo uri ne baba tawurukolo tese, okene ba tva ite, depending kama lale hore na, onalebuka ika poting. Ya ba fever e, ibile di ra horeng, tatra wa naidira le. But section five, ere, SGB, the same SGB, isanale ma tayo determina the policy. But in this case, ere, after hore, SGB, ewole that policy, itamile ya kai, who H O D. I share be, kuri na, this policy, ibua leba tva ilo urba du la mo districting e o. Imababilita ba zapuo, the educational needs sa bo na, le de changing landscape, haribu kataba ya di democracies. Kuri na kiba tva ba joamba ilongo urba du la mo, sekolo sekana kiba tva ba feen, because regardless language policy ki English, ba tva taka ba tva ba antu, ba dominate. Agir, na, isaklo ba English or Africans. So, kika falo uru H O D again at this time, ba tvo na, ba tva u, bar, bankama tya from away from re na. Then, litabenga language policy in section six, le ona ere, rekenya H O D, and in consultation with the SGB. Mata, asanale di SGB, asanale lo na, mara, in this case, rebata wana runali fautu, ba litabaro, unali white school, dikolo kau fela, itlo ba di public school. Thank you.
I am Mr. Joseph Apani. Yes, I'm Mr. Jabu Apani. And firstly, I'd like to say that I do support this bill. I support this bill because of the following reasons. The amendment of section five, six, and thirty-seven, which replaces section fifty-one, I mean, the amendment of section thirty-seven. Now, when we consider section five, it draws more on admission policy. So, at current, the policy, the Sasa policy says that the SGB, and only the SGB, can determine the admittance of learners. So, this is loved by the people who supported the former regime because they knew that when the SGB determines the admittance, they will do so according to color and the pocket, the pockets of the parents, how much money do they have. So now, they can discriminate between those of the other color and those who do not have means or match. And now, this doesn't mean that the SGB no longer has the power and authority. It doesn't mean that the authority now has been taken away from them because they still write the policies. But now, what I love is that after the writing the policy, the H O D has the final say on what's been written by the SGB. So, even though the policy has been written, the head of department will determine will determine the policy that's been written, considering the language policy that's been underwritten. That if the language policy, for example, says that the school's language policy will be English, but the majority of residents are speaking another language. So those are the things that the H O D will look at. So, SGB still has authority, but it is important that the H O D has the final say so that everybody can have, can have an equal opportunity of learning. So these things of having white schools and black schools will no longer be there. It will be just an equal school for everyone.
Dumela ba holo, kesi pomoeli from Dito Bota. I'm from the ACDP. I'm very happy that today we let's get a pillow. And then, I don't understand for white Department of Education council religious at schools. Because now, we open guy prayer, which is a good thing, you understand? And then, secondly, I don't, I don't support this bill because of some, some of the things. It's unfortunate we couldn't read it, we just been given this bill today, but I went through it, and then I saw that there are things that I don't agree with. First and foremost, I just want to, to go to this thing here, but they say kids from thirteen years has a right to do abortion or what, according to this bill. And then, the second issue, I just want to ask Department of Education, why don't they go hand-in-hand with sports and arts and culture? If you can be aware, most of our youth, we are no longer having entertainment at schools now. We used to have dramas, gambus dance, sports facilities, but basically now, we are, we are drinking alcohol because of, from schools, we we don't have such things. And then, kikupakura kape, when we are going back to this bill, we must, I saw, I saw there's a portion that says, if at schools, there's an event, is it possible for at school to sell alcohol? At school, is it possible for selling alcohol? When I remember, at the age of eighteen, you don't, eighteen and under, you don't sell alcohol. If they sell alcohol at school, and then they say they are going to sell it for people who are eighteen years, so what about these other kids? And then, truly speaking, we all know that sex and alcohol, they are going concurrently. So I don't support this bill because of some of the things that I saw. It's unfortunate I thought they are going to bring a projector and then they just going to read it for us so that when we debate about it, and then we can talk about what we know and what we understand. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Standing before the parliament is Comrade Tutla Romohapi, the provincial task team convener of Congress of South African Students, known as COSAS, here in Northwest. I was asked which language I prefer to talk. I said any, I will decide when I arrive in the podium, because this is the only opportunity I have to abuse our constitution and stretch democracy because we don't have money for court orders and such. What I want to say firstly is that, from the point of view of the previously disadvantaged marginalized learners, we support hundred percent and vividly this bill. However, their point- However, there are points that we want to indicate and highlight, of which we believe that they are insult to the Department of Education sector. The last point mentioned by our cater from ACDP, mentioning the issue of alcohol in these bills is an insult to COSAS and is an insult to COSAS and Labor Party, an insult to even our education system. The issue of admission policy that is proposed by the Department of Education, we support it 100% because of, this is what we have been fighting for since 1994. We were wondering if, what is happening in our parliament if they can't take this issue into consideration? When you give SGB the powers to determine, and that power ends there, to determine the admission policy, that thing is wrong because in the SGB, some are not capacitated enough to can deal with legislative issues that are constitutional. Because the issue of admission policy on its nature is constitutional. And when we determine that particular issue, there are issues that need to be taken into consideration because, as South African, we are from apartheid and we are still recovering. And we are mentioning the fact that the constitution of South Africa is a transformative constitutionalism. So, SGB can take decisions, can have meeting, but the HOD must make approval. Why we support that particular decision? Because we know that the HOD has advisors, your curriculum advisor, your legal advisor, and people from such. So, SGB, the knowledge is limited, it's a fact, because part of the problems that we are having in the schools should have been long resolved by the SGB because we don't have SGBs that are capacitated enough, we can't deal with those issues. Number two, we have capacitated SGB but they take decisions from the privileged point of view or they take decisions that are very racially incorrect because they don't want to destabilize their modus operandi. Hence, we support this particular decision. In the issue of language policy and admission policy, we have a school there in Freiberg. That thing needs to be scrapped out. Freiberg High School, that's a Freiberg large school. Well, I believe that I'm going to be given another opportunity because I have a plethora of issues to raise. And as I've said, this is the only opportunity that I have to stretch our constitution and democracy.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Leboham Monye. I am from the Wursko Kalini. I am not for the bill because of these points. Clause 7, Amendment of Section 6. Clause 27 of substitution of Section 33. Clause 32 of Amendment of Section 41. Clause 34, Amendment of Section 43. And clause 37, substitution of Section 51 and not forgetting clause 58, Amendment of Section 59. I am for the insertion of the pronoun they/them and the deletion of the pronouns he or she. These pronouns are exclusive of transgender or non-binary beings and not only are these pronouns, the he or she, discriminatory, but they are very exclusive of other genders. These pronouns, they or them, can be used to identify anyone as it is used to not misgender anyone. The exclusion of the non-binary pronouns can have several disadvantages and they are not limited to being hurtful and exclusionary of people who are identifying as non-binary or gender non-confirming. It makes them feel invalidated and invisible as if their gender identity does not matter or is not recognized. Misgendering, that's my second bullet. Referring to someone using the wrong pronoun can be uncomfortable, invalidating, and very traumatic. It can also cause confusion and misunderstanding in communication. Only using non-binary, I mean, binary pronouns limits our vocabulary and ability to express gender in different and inclusive ways. It reinforces the idea that gender is strictly binary, which is not for everyone. Overall, excluding non-binary pronouns can have serious negative impact on individuals and society as a whole. Using inclusive language and that acknowledges and respects people's gender identity is an important step towards creating a more inclusive and accepting society. Thank you.
Good day. What a blessing to be here and to be part of a democracy. My name is Liesel Brandt. I am a home educating mother of two boys aged 13 and 11. Both my sons have special needs. My oldest has autism and is twice exceptional, meaning he has learning challenges and is gifted at the same time. My other son has sensory processing disorder. He finds it difficult to sit still for even short periods of time and he is very noise-sensitive. Both my sons have a need to walk around while they learn or narrate a story. We started with home education eight years ago because my oldest had a speech delay among his other challenges. If he had to attend a school, he would have been ridiculed and bullied and he would have believed that he is worth less than other children. Home education has served as a greenhouse for my children, protecting them against the elements and granting them the opportunity to grow up and become strong in their weak areas while developing their potential at a pace and in a manner that supports them. My children have challenges that make it impossible for them to follow a one-size-fits-all curriculum and do annual assessments in line with such a curriculum. In some instances, my children are ahead of their age group and in others, they are slightly behind. My children need flexibility and adaptation in their education. In order for me to provide that, I need the freedom to make decisions with regards to a suitable and preferred learning program and means of assessment. As a parent, I want what is best for my children. We all do. I reject clause 37 of the Bala Bill, which states that the head of the department must approve registration for home education if he or she is satisfied that it is in the best interests of the children. This places an unnecessary administrative burden on the department. How will he or she know what is in the best interest of my children and what if he or she gets it wrong? I propose a process of notification instead of registration. I furthermore oppose the comparison of a preferred and chosen home education program against the national curriculum as this infringes on our freedom to find alternative and suitable learning resources with regards to our children's needs and capabilities. I reject the requirement of annual assessment as this will place a huge financial, administrative, technical, and practical burden on both the department and us as parents. Section 29 of the Constitution states that every child, regardless of race, gender, culture, language, religion, ability, or disability, is equally entitled to learn under conditions that respect, protect, and promote the inherent human dignity of each child. And therefore, I need to be free to homeschool. Thank you.
Namtou. Thank you. I'm representing the South African Democratic Teachers Union. As I do, we are supporting the bill on the following issues. At clause 4, that speaks to learner admissions. It is our view that admission requirements and procedures be legislated to address issues of equity and access. And to level the playing fields and governing bodies must remain responsible for admission or administration of processes with a provision for the head of department to intervene in incidents where there is no common cause. Secondly, we are also supporting clause 2, that speaks to the Amendment of the Employment of Educators Act, which then will then speaks to the issue of inclusion of the great art teachers, who must then be employed in line with the EEA. And the provisioning that should be made should then include issues that relates to education budget and also the pros provisioning norm that will cater for the great art educators. The other aspect that we are also speaking to is clause number 5, which speaks to language policy. It is our view that a clear provisioning to regulate the language policy be inserted in the bill again to facilitate access and uniformity across the system. Because our observation has been that some of the SGBs have monopolized and actually used the language policy to exclude African learners in particular. So we think it will be important that this must be taken into cognizance. And in this regard, we think the HOD and the MSC of the department must be the final arbiter in terms of the issue of the language policy. Obviously, we'll make a submission, written submission here. There are areas that we think need to be considered as this bill is being considered. The issue of alcohol, selling of alcohol, that we think should be one of those that needs to be considered and definitely we'll make that particular written submission. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, committee. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. My name is Garar Deploy. I am a homeschool parent and an ACDP member. I reject Section 51, specifically Clause 37 of the Bala Bill. Firstly, I reject the section based on the Constitution of South Africa, Chapter 2, Section 9.3, which states that the state may not discriminate amongst others religion. Proverbs 22 verse 6 in the Holy Bible commands parents to train up a child in the way he should go. My main concerns summarized are as follows. The nature and character of home education is different from school education and cannot be properly regulated under the same law as school education. The Bala Bill provides no principles, guidance, procedures, or structures to facilitate decisions on the best interest of the child. Concerns stemming from the bill are as follows. Section 51, subsection 2A presupposes that the head of department questions the ability of parents to school their own children and the suitability of homeschool education programs and that these programs need to be comparable to national curriculum standards. But, according to Dr. Brian Ray's research in the peer-reviewed Journal of School Choice, quote, "78% of peer-reviewed studies on academic achievement show homeschool students perform statistically significantly better than those in institutional schools," unquote. On the contrary, according to a study published by News 24 on 8 December 2020, only 2% of South African public schools' learners achieve the global benchmark in science. South Africa scores amongst the lowest in the world in mathematics and science. Research suggests that most parents, regardless of background, are capable and competent to make adequate curriculum decisions based on learners' academic achievements. Dr. Ray's research published 15 September 2022 also showed that the, quote, "degree of state control and regulation of homeschooling is not related to academic achievement," unquote. Section 51, subsection 3's plan of deploying assessors to make home education site visits is neither practical nor realistic and void of a productive outcome. It also infringes on people's privacy. I therefore urge the head of department not to pursue this exercise in futility that will undoubtedly waste state funds and create loopholes for corruption. Some of the content in the national curriculum statement I find inappropriate on religious grounds, specifically with regards to sexuality education. I refer back to the imperative given to Christians in Proverbs 22:6 as already stated, that it is the parents' right and obligation to educate their children. Homeschooling parents should be free to choose the curriculum best suited for their children. Thank you.
Good afternoon to all. My name is Amkala Moati and I am from Wursko Kalini. And I see a claim to lay of the bend fine clause 3 on the bill. And that is the monitoring of leader by-wonning. And I keep it good. When it better student betroking height, before the van academia success. Gereal de by-wonning is a sleight of factor in academia success. When a school a by-wonning monitor, can a student identify what gerealt aware is on vroeg and to gripe on the understanding to beat what they're no ragged on academia to slaugh. This verse secure student is a veiligight. When a leers aware is from the school is it belongik on to wait while is and when a leveilig is off new. When a school accurate by-wonings data, can a lebronne mere actif to vice. Algele monitering van leder by-wonning is a aspect what verse secure at student a by the onwiis betroken is. The top van student a by-wonning help the onwiisers on trade to how met student a aware is ait and stipteligight. This helps school on the gemiddle de percentatise student a what elke daht school by-won in the gegeve jar to verstaan and help a le on meneer a te find what aidsakkers for me. Here the inluchting, when you're dead, met regerings over here a gedeel word, help a le oek on beleidet a werke and strokies draai te verminder and kindness op school to how. Dank you.
Hello, Nana. Are you supporting or not supporting the bill? You are supporting? Okay. Translation? There's no Africans? Okay, we are fine with Africans, right? Okay, can we get, can we get the, just a summary? Our translators are Siswana unfortunately, so they, Mara, when I were translating, so you know what did she say? Help us. All right. In the meantime, can we proceed because of time? And I am asking that, we are too many inside. Now, if you have made your submission and you have spoken, if you don't mind leaving us, we just request you to open space for people. There are still many people doing registration outside. Or if that does not happen, I'm asking the protection services to allow people to sit on top and then we are going to identify them from, it's closed. Or they say the top is closed. So we are just asking an extra space from the people who have made submission and who have spoken. How did those people sit? I can't hear you, the ma- They are waiting. Are they working? All right. They don't want to leave. Okay. But as they are the back, we are requesting that you allow people to sit there. The people that are coming from the queues, because that's the only way we'll be able to move because they come and make noise. For instance, those people are standing there. So if those people can sit there and then others join them, we will allow, we will allow them to, please, please, that. Thank you. You can proceed, madam. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thanks for this opportunity. My name is Sophie Berndt and I am from Clarkstorp. I do not support the Bala Bill. Tim Berners-Lee, the man who changed the world by inventing the World Wide Web, once said, "We need diversity of thought in the world to face the new challenges." South Africa is falling behind the rest of the world in skills development and skills diversity. How can we fix this problem? Partly by encouraging diversity in educational methods and educational environments. Our youngest son, Michael, is now 15 years old. By grade 2, he had tried two schools and we saw that things were not working out for him. Chronic teacher absenteeism and playground violence were the order of the day. Our greatest concern was that he was losing his love of learning. We eventually had no choice but to pull him out of school. Fast forward seven years and Michael is excelling academically, but most importantly, he cares for others, has purpose, and still loves learning. He can learn at his own pace in a safe environment without being bullied. I cannot thank God enough for showing us an educational route that was stimulating to our son and for the wonderful homeschooling community which we have grown to love. As parents, it is my, as parent, it is my God-given duty and responsibility. In fact, it is in my best interest to raise and educate my children well. My husband and I- My husband and I take issue with clause thirty-seven of the Bella Bill for six reasons. One, it assumes that home educating parents are not responsible citizens, and need to be checked via compulsory annual assessments, possible home visits, and permission by the head of department to be allowed to continue with her home education. Two, it creates additional bureaucracy which will distract home educators from their main task of educating their children. Three, by creating unnecessary bureaucracy, it opens the door for more corruption opportunities by government officials. Four, it will be difficult and impractical to implement. Five, it is in conflict with other legislation, for example, the North West Schools Education Act and the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, article twenty-six, item three, which says that parents have a prior right to choose the kind of education that shall be given to their child.